My name is Jay Reyes and I'm the clerk of Riverside Township. Welcome to the 154th Annual Meeting of Riverside Township. If you haven't already done so, please take a moment, sign in at the attendance sheet by the door. That's going to allow us to verify that you are a registered voter here in the township of Riverside. Just a quick reminder, any registered voter here within the township has the right to vote on all matters before us at this annual meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Wilt.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is the election of a moderator. The moderator of this meeting is elected from among the electors present. It is customary to award an honorarium to the moderator of the annual town meeting. What is your pleasure regarding an honorarium? Trustee Heilbach. All right, I hear a motion for an honorarium of $100. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, seconded by trustee Carol. We'll call for a quick vote, please. All those in favor of awarding a $100 honorarium to the moderator of this annual meeting, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We have a $100 award to our moderator. Are there any nominations for moderator of the 154th Annual Meeting of the Township of Riverside? Assessor Sitkowitz.
I nominate Barbara Legan to act as the moderator for this evening's meeting.
Okay, we have a nomination for Barbara...
Legan, L-E-G-A-N.
For Barbara Legan to serve as our moderator.
Sir, have you...
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of appointing Ms. Barbara Legan as the moderator for the 154th Annual Meeting, please say so by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right, unanimous consent, motion carries. All right, Mrs. Legan, if you will step forward here, we will administer an oath. Okay, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
And impartially discharge...
And impartially discharge...
The duties of the moderator...
The duties of the moderator...
Of this annual town meeting...
Of this annual town meeting...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
All right, very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, let's take a moment and sign this document. Okay, so we're going to get started here and ask you to start off by approving the minutes from the last meeting, but before we do that, just a quick reminder before we get going, if there is any additional comment that needs to be made, we'll ask you once again to please step forward to the microphone so that your comment may be heard and recorded by our friends that are recording this meeting for later distribution. So please, if you have any comment that you'd like to make, you are going to step up to the microphone and make it there so that it can be recorded.
Okay, first order of business is approval of the minutes from the last annual town meeting. We would like to note that the minutes of the 153rd Annual Meeting are available on the table at the door. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the 153rd Annual Town Meeting?
Second.
Okay, a second?
A second.
Like a call for the vote? Ayes?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, the ayes have it. It's passed. We have new business? Is there any new business to come before the electors? See no business, we'll move forward to the township reports. The first, we have financial statements of the township supervisor.
You all have the written form of it. It looks like this, a multi-page report. I will just highlight a couple of things because you can all read the general town fund as of the close of business on March 31, 2025, which is the end of the fiscal year and which was only one week ago, so the total sum of general town fund accounts was $783,224.91. Revenues through the year were $997,711.94. Expenses were $745,732.37. That meant that we were able to increase our reserves by $251,979.57. And the amount of tax levied in the preceding year was $842,066.20. The general assistance fund similarly, at the close of business, at the end of the fiscal year, had $379,733.36. Revenues were $74,379.28. Expenses were $117,210.46. That fund has been in a large reserve area, so we have been very moderate in our levies for that fund. So that was a decrease of $42,831.18. And the amount of taxes levied in the preceding year were $57,577.18. The devil is in the details and the details are on the following pages, so you can see in what way those funds were spent. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you have, but I don't plan to go through it in great detail. You have any questions?
Okay. See no questions. Can I get a motion to accept the financial statement of the township supervisor?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? See no discussion, the action on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? See no opposed, the result, action is accepted. Next on the township reports is the report of the township supervisor.
Yes, my non-financial report, again, you have it in writing. I will just do some highlighting. The township is, as you just heard, in good financial condition, as confirmed by our annual audit, and we continue to serve the social service needs of our community. We were fortunate not to have too many emergencies this year, so we have been able to build our reserves because there's a lot more expenditures coming in the near future as our 130-year-old building has a lot of needs for the future. Recently, we have, along with other townships in the state, been doing battle with the legislature and the governor's office because the governor's recent budget proposal included a plan to eliminate townships. So the second page of my report includes a resolution that the Board of Trustees passed just last month because we all stand strong, because we don't believe that eliminating townships will in any way help the budget, help the state finances. Townships in general operate in a much more economical and efficient way than any other form of government. Imagine that the services that we provide, including general assistance, emergency assistance, food pantry, nurses closet, senior programs, et cetera, would turn to the hands of our county. And imagine where you would go to get those services then. So the resolution was passed, it did not, we were encouraged by the township officials of Illinois, our trade association, so to speak, to pass a similar resolution at our annual meetings. It is not on the agenda, but I think with you having it there, that at the end of my report, if the body here, if the residents of the community would like to reiterate that same resolution and pass it, I think that it probably would be in order for that to happen from the floor. The emergency, because as soon as the governor spoke, there was legislation there to eliminate townships, and that was put in abeyance, let's say. It's been tabled for now, but it's certainly not dead, and it's an issue that rises frequently. So we hope that should it come about, we can ask for your support in fighting the elimination of township government. General assistance is statutorily required by the state of Illinois. Emergency assistance is optional, but we provide both in this township. You would be surprised, in a township that we probably think of as pretty well-heeled, that general assistance this past year served a total of 24 different households, 24 people in need qualified for general assistance, and emergency assistance was afforded to 10 different households. Emergency assistance must be truly an emergency. Usually, it means you're facing eviction, you're facing a utility being shut off, sometimes it's already been shut off, so we bail you out, so it's that kind of thing, and there are times when the amount that we've designated as our maximum doesn't cover it, so we cooperate with other organizations such as the St. Vincent de Paul Society and other charities. Our food pantry has supported 105 households in the fiscal year that just ended. Each recipient gets two tote bags of pre-packed food. We only have shelf-stable items because we don't have the space for refrigeration, and also because our pantry is open every business day, and so people come at random times. Anything that is perishable would certainly spoil or not go off the shelves quickly enough. We also, in the summertime, provide vouchers for the farmer's market, and this year we paid out a total of $2,000 to the vendors for those vouchers that were used. In November and December, in one of those months when food pantry people come, they also get a gift card to a local grocer, so it's always either Riverside Foods or Aldi, which are the ones that are within the township. We recently acquired a little more space. One of the rooms that we used as overflow housed a great deal of sheet music from when there was a Riverside Township band, and that long-disbanded band finally found a new home for all of that, so we managed to remove the filing cabinets that took up our extra space, and we now have plenty of space for when we get food drive things like Riverside Foods does their fill-the-trailer, postal carrier drive, the Hauser food drive, Central School, local churches, we often get a lot of things at once. Our nurses closet had a lot of traffic this year, and I think it's gaining momentum as the word gets out. Free senior programs, which aren't necessarily all just for seniors, include our Monday, Wednesday, and Friday exercise class, Thursday afternoon movies, the Riverside Township radio players, and trustee Clark provides some extra little bonuses. This year, she organized a senior fraud seminar with the Riverside Police Department and the Attorney General's Office, giving people a lot of helpful information on how to protect themselves and their wallets, and she also planned several treats and luncheons. Youth programs, we do through partnerships with other organizations because we don't have the staffing to really run youth programs. Activities by the board included two shred events, a senior fair in North Riverside, the Autumn Fest and Chili Cook-Off in North Riverside, Independence Day Parade participation in Brookfield, Riverside, and North Riverside, and the North Riverside Scholarship Golf outing. We also supported cultural programs such as RAW and the Riverside Arts Center. I want to especially thank the township staff for making us look good and always being there for the residents, especially Andrew Luther, who organized much of this meeting, the refreshments and all today, Nina Tagliola, who is our face to all the people who opened that door, Keith Leece and Joe Price, who keep the building running, and also I want to thank the assessor and her staff, Mary Jo Miller and Barbara Legan, and of course, as everyone knows, our Fran Sitkowitz, for the good name that they give all of us. So, thank you. I also thank the residents for our reelection and hope to serve this community well for the next few years. Are there any questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution of the Board of Trustees committed to maintaining township services and opposing legislation consolidating or eliminating townships in Illinois.
Okay. Could we get a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Do we need to vote?
Yeah, we'll need to vote on that, but we still actually have...
To vote on the minutes first.
We have to approve the supervisor's report.
Okay, okay. So, may we first...
Could we maybe ask trustee Clark to withdraw that motion for just a moment?
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, motion withdrawn.
And then she's going to present a motion to...
I present a motion to accept the supervisor's report.
Okay, could we get a second to the motion to accept the report by the supervisor? We have a second. Okay, any discussion on the report? Okay, action on the motion is approved.
Um, wait, actually, let's take a vote.
Should we take a vote? Okay. Could we take a vote on the motion to accept the report of the township supervisor?
Could I, on whether aye?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, action on motion approved. All right.
I would like to make a motion that we accept, or, yeah, we accept Riverside Township's commitment to maintaining township services and opposing legislation consolidating or eliminating townships in Illinois.
Could we get a second to that motion?
Second.
A second to the motion? Would, any discussion on the motion?
You handed three of us. There's one.
All right. A vote on the motion, all, can we vote? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, then, any abstentions? All, action on the motion to accept townships as the supervisor mentioned.
Yeah, that's what we, I think we need to clarify, so the motion, there's a motion, the motion that was just approved was a motion made by trustee Clark to adopt the...
Resolution.
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 Got it, that's what it was.
...of the Board of Trustees for the Township of Riverside County, Illinois. It's attached to the government report.
We're doing great.
Okay, so, all right. So, third on the agenda for tonight is a report of the township clerk.
Yeah, very good, thank you. Just very quickly, I did put together a short report, it is attached to our record here, but I will read it into the record for our benefit. So the Riverside Township clerk, like all township clerks, is statutorily mandated to be the township's keeper of records. The clerk drafts and maintains meeting minutes for the regular committee of the whole and special meetings of the township board. The clerk is also responsible for filing such documents as required by county and state law. It has been an honor to serve as township clerk for the people of Riverside Township. I would particularly like to thank the Riverside Township Supervisor Vera Wilt and the township board for their tireless leadership and advocacy on behalf of the residents which we serve. The 2024-2025 year period allowed Riverside Township many opportunities to continue to demonstrate its ongoing commitment to the services it offers to area residents. Under the direction of Riverside Township Supervisor Vera Wilt and the township board, the township continued to demonstrate its commitment to the needs of the most vulnerable in the township. Faced with increased inflationary economic pressures, increased state taxes, and uncertain political times, many residents struggled to obtain basic necessities. Township Supervisor Wilt continued to advocate for the food pantry and other public assistance efforts to respond to an increased need. The township also undertook efforts to reduce expenses to further address housing insecurity, mental health needs, senior assistants, and other public services by engaging in community partnership with trusted not-for-profit organizations in the area. Trustee Tim Heilbach continued to provide guidance and resources to the township's mental health board in its efforts to address mental health concerns for residents of all ages. Trustee Mary Robb Clark continued her efforts to offer programming and services to township senior citizens. Trustee Matt DeCostola and trustee John Carroll provided extensive government knowledge and experience to be careful stewards of township resources. Township assessor Fran Sitkowitz again demonstrated her value to township residents by offering property tax appeal and related services during a time of continued and substantial increase in property reassessment by Cook County. Additionally, Andrew Luther, deputy clerk, deserves particular praise for his day-to-day efforts for the residents of the township. He has again proven himself to be invaluable. The township would not function as efficiently without his efforts. The township board begins the process of undertaking a new initiative, the repair and preservation of Riverside Town Hall. Over the course of its many years in service, the township building has undergone many expansions and repairs that is now in need of more substantive structural repairs. The township board has worked to identify cost savings that will permit the township to maintain existing levels of services to residents while also making important repairs and improvements to Township Hall in the coming years. In closing, Riverside Township government has been active, vibrant, and responsive to the needs of the community. The township will continue to address its obligations responsibly, efficiently, and compassionately. Respectfully submitted, Jay Reyes, Township Clerk. Thank you.
Motion to accept the report of the township clerk?
Second.
Okay. Second to the motion?
Okay, I'm ready. I can't have them seconded.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. All ayes in accepting it?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. Action is accepted.
Thank you, perfect.
All right. Fourth on the agenda is the report of the township assessor.
Thank you very much. First, I would like to extend my appreciation to the supervisor, Vera Wilt, and the Riverside Township Board for their continued support of the services the Township Assessor's Office brings to the residents of Riverside Township. I will briefly go through some highlights of the data that my office collects from January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2024. This, gathering this data helps our office better serve our taxpayers, and my assistants, Mary Jo Miller and Barb Legan, are very active in compiling these figures that we depend on. So, the Riverside Township Assessor's Office is statutorily required to process permits in Cook County. Last year, we processed 1,031 permits that amounted to $22,576,668. We consider it a priority of our office, after the permits, to make sure that no taxpayer misses their exemptions. All taxpayers should have all of their exemptions on their property tax bills and really consider it a priority to make sure they have them on those tax bills for the second installment. Last year, we assisted 234 taxpayers apply for their exemptions, homeowner exemptions, senior citizen exemptions, low-income senior citizen exemptions, disabled homeowner, disabled veterans exemptions. We went, we spent an exceedingly amount of time last year filing for exemptions as the Cook County Assessor's Office had new processes in place, and this caused really an inordinate amount of time that we had to spend on exemptions last year. It took a lot of time away from accomplishing other tasks, but somehow we made it through. Another area that we spent a lot of time on last year was processing certificates of error. Taxpayers in Cook County may go back three years to get refunds for any exemptions that they might have missed or for any assessments that were inappropriately placed on their homes. So, again, the Cook County Assessor's Office, we're having some significant problems because of the transition that their offices going through. Again, this caused our office to be super busy with this particular task. Last year, we helped 95 taxpayers file for certificates of error amounting to $373,882. This was a record for our office. In the past, last year, I think it was about half as much. So this was just astounding. When we put these figures together, we couldn't believe it. So I think our residents were very happy with those refunds. And of course, we also assist our taxpayers with filing appeals. We assist them with appeals at the county level with the Board of Review and the Assessor's Office. We also have a few people who wish to go to the Illinois Property Tax Appeals Board, and we guide them through that process. So last year, we assisted 439 taxpayers file appeals with the Cook County Assessor's Office, 405 taxpayers filed appeals with the Cook County Board of Review, so that was 844 taxpayers over the two appeal periods, and we had about 280 of those taxpayers in our office. The majority of our taxpayers, we have them well-trained, we send them comps and step-by-step directions so that they can accomplish their appeals at home at their convenience. So, again, it was a busy year for the second year of the triennial last year. Finally, the Cook County Assessor's Office provides our office with property transfers, homes that have sold, businesses that have sold over the last year. This last year, we thought it might have been, we might not have gotten all of the data that we usually get. Again, the Assessor's Office is going through some transitions, so, but we think we got a good, we got enough information so that we could at least track some information here about property transfers in the township. So last year, we had, we tracked 192 home sales that amounted to $97,545,936. That's an average of about $508,000 per transaction. So we also, last year, it was unusual, we did not receive any property transfer information about businesses that have sold in the township, so we just don't have the time to go digging for it, but that was the data that we had available. available to us. We like to keep track of the median sales ratio, which is assessed value to sale price. And usually, in the second year of the triennial, we start seeing it declining, and last year it was 8%. The statutory level of assessment in Cook County is 10%. We do also try and do as much outreach as possible. We did have an outreach with Commissioner George Cardenas's office when the Cook County Board of Review was open. That was on August 8th. We had a good turnout for that. We had Commissioner Aguilar here to help answer questions about flooding. We continue to get those questions because there were some flooding issues from the last two years. So, and we maintain a list of about 1,600 people that we continue to communicate with through our Constant Contact program. We send out emails when people need to pay attention to what's going on in the property tax cycle, for appeals, exemptions, when they have to pay their property taxes, things like that. So that's pretty much what we've been busy with over the last year. And I would like to thank my staff, Mary Jo Miller and Barb Legan, for their exceptional level of professionalism they bring to the Township Assessor's Office. I know it's...they're greatly respected and appreciated by all the taxpayers in Riverside Township. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the report of the township assessor?
So moved.
Okay. Second to the motion?
Aye.
Any discussion? Take action on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Then the report is accepted. Next on the agenda is reports from township trustees, if we have any. Seeing no reports, we'll go to six, reports of the mental health board.
My name is Adam Wilt, and I am here as a member of the Riverside Township Mental Health Board to present our report from the past year. In 1972, the township voters approved a referendum that allowed for the creation of the Riverside Township Mental Health Board. Since that time, our volunteer board members have worked to identify mental health, substance abuse, intellectual disability needs of our community, and then contract to make sure that those services are met for our residents. Again, as we are volunteer members of that board, we have seven members of our board who are appointed by the township board, and we make sure that, really to focus on those three categories of support. And we do that, as I mentioned, through working with different agencies that are in the township. We have six community-based agencies that we help fund services through over the past year, and then we had one initiative that was completed again to support the first responders in the Village of Riverside who need support when it comes to mental health and to help support them in an area where they do not otherwise have those services financially supported. Over the last year, we funded $713,941.64 of community grants and aid. And one of the things that we guarantee through those grants is to make sure that the services of the agencies are provided to the residents of the township with no waitlist. And so we really want to make sure that when people in our community need services, that they're there for them, and they can make sure that those services are known and make sure that they're not waiting for those things. So that's one of the key aspects of having those partnerships with those core agencies. The highlights of some of the other work we do, we have a Community Resource Center that is a great program that partners the Riverside Township Mental Health Board with three local agencies, Agent Care Connections, UCP SegWent of Greater Chicago, and The Way Back In. And they help provide resources and information and direction for people who are residents of the township. So I would like to point out for those viewing on television and for those here, if you or anyone you know who's a resident of the township is seeking support, needs services, doesn't know where to turn, the Community Resource Center is really a hidden gem right here in our community that helps provide direction and provides guidance for people in their time of need. Some of the other programs that we work with, we have been partnering with NAMI, which is the National Alliance on Mental Illness. Unfortunately, this past year, they discontinued their Local Support For You Teen Tax Program. They had some issues with one of their service providers that helped to make sure that that program was working. They are, however, still providing support as an organization, and that can be found for our local students as well as others in our community who are experiencing any mental health crisis by texting NAMI, that's N-A-M-I, to 62640. So I do want to highlight that as one of the really important things is that people should not be made to feel alone in our community, and we...there are support. A lot of people aren't always looking to talk to somebody like in our Community Resource Center or an agency, and sometimes are looking for something that's a little less direct. And that text medium has been really important for supporting mental health for our residents. The board has continued a practice that we started last year as well to meet on-site with some of our partner agencies. This practice has been really great at helping our board to learn some of the intricacies, some of the nuances of the services that our agencies provide, get a chance to better understand those agencies, their services, as well as some of the needs. I'm really proud to say that those have led to some great conversations, but also some of those agencies seeking new opportunities for funding and creating new programs as we further identify the needs of our residents. We are also continuing to be satisfied with the programs that our agencies provide. They help...the work that we do is really through them, and they are the ones who make sure that the services are provided for in our community, but also, more importantly, we use the information from their reporting on a monthly basis to help inform our decision-making when it comes to funding of those services. Couple of other initiatives that we've created over the past year, we have a couple of committees that our board has established. One of those is our grant application committee. We've begun a review of our grant application process. We've been working with our agencies as well as other, like similar mental health boards and organizations within the state of Illinois, to identify how we can make that process easier for our agencies, but also more impactful for us, so that we can make sure that we're collecting the right information, but not asking for things that maybe we don't need. So really, hopefully, working to make that mutually beneficial. And we are also working...we've created a Community Engagement Committee, and that group has really been working to identify ways that we can better support the agencies that we have and support our community in finding the work and the different resources that they need within the mental health space, the intellectual and developmental disability space, and the substance abuse and addiction space. And finally, we have done a lot of this work, and I'd like to make a special note to our consultant who is here tonight, Joseph Troyani, our staff secretary Joan Layback, for their work to support our board. Our board is a volunteer board, but they have helped provide a lot of different information for us, helped to guide our decision-making, but also guide our work. I additionally like to acknowledge Thomas Dunlevy, who served as a member of our board for many years. He retired over this past year. And I'd like to welcome Melinda Lehman, who's also here tonight. I apologize, I noticed after submission, her last name is missing an H in it. It is spelled correctly at the bottom of the report, so please reference that. But Melinda has been a wonderful addition to our board and has jumped right in to the work we do. Our board, we meet monthly, with the exception of July, August, and December. Our meetings, we are going to actually be changing those with our next meeting to 6:30 PM. We moved it up a little this past year to 6:00 PM. It's getting a little tight, especially with the trains locally, to make sure we get here on time. Even that extra minute tonight probably helped us a little bit. But more importantly, we do invite you to join us. As I mentioned, some of those meetings are right here at the Riverside Town Hall in this room, Room 4. However, we also have been continuing to meet at the locations of our different agencies in the community so that we can, again, continue to monitor what they do and help to better make sure that our community is aware of the services available to them. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Could we get a motion to accept the report of the mental health board?
Oh.
A second to the motion? Let's see, a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of accepting say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. A result...a motion is...the report is accepted.
Thank you.
So the final thing on the agenda is setting of the date for the next annual town meeting.
Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to set the next annual township meeting for Tuesday, April 14th, 2026, at 6:01 PM.
Okay. Second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Call for the vote? All say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? All right, then the motion for the meeting for Tuesday, April 14th, 2026, is accepted.
All right, we're on a roll. Last one will be to adjourn this meeting.
Okay. So there's a call for a motion to adjourn this 153rd annual meeting...uh, fourth, 54th annual meeting?
So moved.
Second. All say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? All right, then, so this meeting is adjourned.